Recording in progress.
Okay, I want to say good morning to everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Thank you for coming. And I'd like to call our April 5th County Commissioner meeting to order. Could you please stand then for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reporting for which it stands, "One patient under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, again, thank you. Okay, our first item on the agenda now is the First Order of Business. Okay, so Sky is up here, and he has, we have some bid options. Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good.
What we have today are several bids due that are-
We need your name, sir, for the record.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sky Metters, County Engineer, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. What we have today are several bids that have been submitted for our annual materials bid. And what I would like to do, if it's okay, is to go ahead and go through each one and read the name of who submitted, and then go back and open these and get the numbers together, and then come forward, if that's okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. Okay, okay. Well, the first item we have for bid opening is our 2022 bituminous patching materials. And we had three bids submitted for that specific item. And I had bids from Central Paving, Inc., out of Logan Support, Indiana; Milestone Contractors North, out of South Bend; and Reece Riley, out of South Bend. Were there any others that submitted bids or would like to submit bids on that particular item? Seeing none, we can go to the next item we had, which was 2022 Drainage Pipe and Structures Guardrail and Bridge Materials. And let's see here. And we had two bids submitted on that. One was from the James Drew Corporation, out of Indianapolis, Indiana. And the second was Debco Metal Culverts, out of Francisville, Indiana. Were there any others wishing to submit bids on those items? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is item number three, 2022 Fuel Oil Lubricants and Miscellaneous Materials. That item, we had, I see, three bids submitted. The first was from Ceres Solutions, out of Wall Bash, Indiana. The second was Petroleum Traders Corporation, out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. And then we had a bid submitted from Coalliance Cooperative, Inc., out of Avon, Indiana. Were there any other bids that were submitted for that, or anyone wishing to submit bids? Okay. Next item we had was 2022 Liquid Bituminous Materials. I had a submission from the Klink Group, out of Ashley, Indiana; Asphalt Materials, out of Indianapolis, Indiana. And it looks like there was one also from Milestone Contractors North, out of South Bend, Indiana. But I had a question mark by that one. But there was a bid document. It could have been put in a different bid, in the same bid as the one previously, so... Was there anyone wishing to submit?
Sky, you had three bids then?
Three bids, yeah. Okay. Next, we had-
Number five?
Item five is 2022 Miscellaneous Aggregates. We had two bids. The first is the Klink Group, out of Ashley, Indiana. And the second is Reece Riley, out of South Bend, Indiana. Anyone wishing to submit bids on that? Okay, thank you. And the final item, item number six, 2022 Traffic Paint and Signage Material. We had four bids on that. The first was Ennis Flint, Inc., out of Greensboro, North Carolina. Next, we had Allstate Coatings Company, out of Glade Water, Texas. Then we had Osborne Associates, out of Logan, Ohio. And then rounding that out, we had Delwa Enterprises, out of Knox, Indiana. Was there anyone wishing to submit any bids on that item that didn't get a chance to do so? Okay, thank you. I request that we recommend that we accept these bids. We'll go back and open them and get the numbers on here, and then come up and let you know what those numbers are later in the meeting, if that's okay.
Right. I'll move to accept the bids.
I'll second that. Is that all right?
That's all right, with me.
Okay.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is for the Commissioners' Reports and Request. And the first thing on our Commissioners' is the A, is Accounts Payable Docket. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good. Okay, the next thing we have now is the February Youth of the Month, which is the Washington High School Girls Basketball Team. Yes, so today-
Whoa, 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 come on up and stand by the podium, please.
I was just going to say that today, the Board of Commissioners is proud to once again recognize the Washington Panthers Girls Basketball Team. We are so proud of how well you have represented our school, your school, your community, and your county. More impressive than their 26- and 3 record is the resilience Coach Reynolds and the Lady Panthers, showed as they went on to rise above last year's heartbreaking loss to decisively win this year's state championship. Congratulations again to Coach Reynolds and the Lady Panthers. And I was so proud to watch you guys on TV, and you won, and I'm like, yay! Congratulations, good!
Coach, would you like to introduce the players?
That's what I was just going to say, yeah.
Okay.
First of all, thank you very much for having us. This was a great year, and being able to cap it off, with being able to be here with you all and be recognized, it means a lot to us because we do talk about our community and how important it is. And we understand how important of an outlet basketball can be and winning for a community. So, thank you all very much. I'm Coach Steve Reynolds, the head coach of South Bend Washington Girls Basketball. To my left, I'll just start going forward, is Junior Amaya Reynolds, Junior Rashonda Jones, Senior Mila Reynolds, Freshman Jemaya Parhams, Freshman Raya Wilson, Assistant Coach Marcy Reynolds, and Freshman Kira Reynolds. Missing today, freshman Monique Mitchell, Senior Shamara Allen, and Senior Lauren Gillan would round out the varsity team and state champs.
Okay. Yeah, you can give that. I'd like to congratulate you all. It's a great accomplishment, what you've done, and you have a lot of talent coming back. But for the players, oh, go ahead. Frank, let's do a picture.
I'll get out of the way.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Y'all can stay, because this is going to be part of the civics class you guys will have. No, you can go if you want.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our April Employee of the Month, which is Julie Igas.
Podium, podium, please.
Yes, and she's the administrator-
Anybody else that wants to accompany her up there? That's cool.
Well, let me just say, yeah, she's the Administrator of St. Joseph County Public Defender Department. And she processes court-ordered appointments and disementos and client appointments to the public defenders. She fields communications and phone calls for the Indiana State Public Defender Commission, the courts and our attorneys, other court-affiliated departments, public defender clients, and their families in response to general inquiries from the public. So, congratulations.
Whoa, 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 go ahead.
I'm Jim Corporal, I'm the Chief Public Defender. We're in Room 245 of Courthouse 1. Julie, I just happened to look it up today. Julie has been with the Public Defender Department. It'll be nine years in two weeks. So, this turned out to be a pretty good, pretty good reward for her work. When we talk about the Public Defender Department Administrative Staff, she's it. She does it all. And it's not easy hurting 31 lawyers, but she does a wonderful job at it. We're very proud of her and very happy that she won this.
Any comments?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Augustino and myself would like to make some comments. First of all, young lady, thanks for all the hard work. But probably more importantly, in our minds, anybody grew up on Sherman Avenue, basically a block away from my home and Mr. Augustino's home, it's a great honor for us to honor you, coming from the Northwood side back in the day. So, again, appreciate all your work. Do you still play softball?
No, not anymore.
Well, we do have a County Commissioner co-ed softball team, if you'd like to come out and play.
I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, cool. Mr. Augustino?
Very proud of a fellow Crusader.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, come on up for a picture.
And your gifts, here. Okay. Well, I really like recognizing people like this. This is good. Okay. All right, next item on our agenda is the ERP Contract Revision, Amendment Number Four.
Good morning, this is Scott Sanif. I'm the ERP Project Manager for the Board of Commissioners, offices on the second floor. And I've got before you something that's been coming for a little bit, and we're finally trying to formalize this. This would be the request to amend the contract, the original contract, to add on an additional period of project management hours in the tune of 79,200, which will get us through July. And at that time, it is expected that we will be going live with our ERP system.
Okay, you have any comments or questions?
Sure, Scott, is there going to be any extra that we're going to have to go through once this starts running, or are you all good?
Well, we have successfully brought up all four parts of the module now. And it's going to be still a lot of work. There's been some introductory training to the departments and such. But we're now just tackling payroll and human resources and the employee self-service portal. These things are coming up, and the clock is ticking, so I don't know. I think the only time we might have to come back to the table for extra project management would be is if we missed that July 1 deadline. And I don't think that's going to happen, but funny, things have occurred during the course of this project. So, I'm pretty optimistic. Yeah, well, the only thing from here is we just rip off the Band-Aid and implement a new system. It should be lots of fun.
Okay, so when you rip off that Band-Aid, will there be a scab?
Yeah.
Okay. You miss IT?
Uh, yeah.
All right, thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I was just going to ask, is there a motion?
You want to move for approval?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're moving on to the Maintenance Department issues, and it's a Ward of Floor Mats Contract to Wildman Business Group. Is there any comments about it, or? Oh, here she comes, all right, good, yay!
Good morning, Helen Wituski, St. Joe County Maintenance, lower level of the County City Building, 235-9666. We are requesting approval of the floor mat contract to the company called Wildman. It's the former monarch. You might not be familiar with Wildman. There were several quotes submitted, contracts submitted, and they had the most competitive pricing. The contract was evaluated and looked over carefully by procurement, by maintenance, and by our county attorney, Mike Mish. It would be an annual contract. It would be approved from April 1st, 2022, through March 31st, 2023.
I just saw it to be $285.90 for the weekly price, is that right?
That is the estimate, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Sounds okay to me. Is there any other comments or questions?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you. Okay, now we're going on to the Health Department. Okay, number A on the Health Department is Approval to Apply for Grant That Will Enhance Department of Health Preparedness in Order to Respond to Public Health and Healthcare Emergencies.
Good morning.
Oh, Amy, okay, hi, Amy.
Yes, good morning. Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the County City Building. And the request before you is to apply for a grant through the Indiana Department of Health for our Public Health Preparedness Unit in the amount of $25,000.
Any questions or comments?
Sure, Amy, could you briefly explain what that would be for?
Yes, we would use these funds to purchase any supplies needed for our COVID clinic that we run in our 9th floor clinic office. We could use it for PPE, we could use it for salary recovery, for our public health coordinator, anything related to any public health emergency.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Move for approval?
I'll second that, although, okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, good. Moving on, the next thing on the Health Department is B, Approval to Apply for Grant That Will Increase Capacity in Department of Health-Led Program.
This is another grant through the State Department of Health that we would like to apply for. It is in the amount of $566,000, which would enable us to do case management and environmental health risk assessments.
Any comments or questions?
You have a question. How many homes would this serve if you get the grant?
I don't know if I have that information. Is that something you know, Bob?
Yeah, Bob Meinterz, Health Officer, 8th and 9th floors here on the County City Building. I don't know the numbers. What happened, Commissioner Dieter, is that the state legislature this year approved a lowering of the threshold for lead case monitoring and case management. And so, the lower level now drops down to five for case management. In fact, we're offering case management and home lead assessments for as low as 3.5 to five lead levels. And this is going to increase fairly significantly the amount of work that needs to be done for following these individuals and doing the lead assessment. So, I can get you for last year, I don't have it off the top of my head right now, the numbers that we had that would fit into this. But it's a fairly substantial increase from what we had been required to do last year.
Will this specifically go to at-risk census tracts?
It'll go to anybody who has a elevated lead level. So, anybody in the county where we see lead levels greater than 3.5. And so, pediatricians and family medicine docs who care for children and their routine clinic visits at year one and year two are recommended to check lead levels, particularly on kids who are living in homes built before 1978.
How do you gather that data?
That gets reported up to the state and as well as then to us.
All right, thanks, man. I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good. Okay, next thing on the Health Department is C, It's Approval of Contract Between St. Joseph County Health Department Fetal Infant Mortality Review Program and the National Birth Equity Collaboration. Approval retroactive to June 14th, 2021.
This is a contract between the Department of Health and Foundation for Louisiana. In order for them to provide us with a birth equity assessment, we did receive funds from the Community Foundation of St. Joseph County in order to fund this project.
Explain birth equity.
Did you hear him?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Could you explain how that works and what it is?
Well, happy to do so, but Robyn Vida is, I believe, on the line, and I'll defer to her right now. And if she wants to follow up with me, I'd be happy to do so. Robyn, are you there? You're muted right now.
I'm here. I'm here, yes, thank you. Commissioner Dieter, I'm sure I heard your question. You're asking me to define birth equity or define the parameters-
Both.
-that this project includes. Okay.
Both.
Okay, so let me start first with the goals around this project. As Amy alluded to, this is the first step in identifying where our infant mortality rate is significantly higher for black infants compared to white infants. And assess our environment, our partners, our community members, on identifying where those disconnects are and leading causes of those inequities. Really, when we look at birth equity, we want to ensure that every woman has a respectful and caring, culturally appropriate pregnancy and birth experience. So, that's really what we're looking at here. We've talked a lot about birth equity, not just as a country and a state and as a county. However, we really are unsure of what the best next steps are here. After doing a lot of research and listening, we see the National Birth Equity Collaborative, started by Dr. Joya Perry, really is best practice in helping communities in reducing this disparity between a black and white infant, hence why we sought to work with them directly. Does that answer your question?
Will you all be tracking this via census tracts again?
No, actually. So, the assessment, the initial assessment piece, really looks at the NBEC team working with the community partners that work in this space with all pregnant women, and looking at their practices, their policies, their system flow, their outcomes. And we have, at the Department of Health, looked at infant mortality by census tract. So, we know of those hotspots, but this is really more of a qualitative view of what is happening and how we collectively, as a community, move forward in addressing these issues, whether they be system-based or community-based, environmental-based. So, really, it's for the entire county.
Okay, will that include prenatal education?
Yes, yes. So, looking at what prenatal education and awareness is occurring. Also, a lot of the work we've been doing at the Department of Health does focus on overall women's health prior to pregnancy to ensure that when mom does become pregnant, that mom is at her healthiest she can be to ensure that that birth outcome is positive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just glad that we're going to move forward to develop the effective strategies to eliminate inequalities in birth outcomes for mothers and infants in St. Joseph County. So, I'm glad to see that help everybody. So, yes.
Move for approval?
Motion to approve. I second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, now we're moving on to the next thing on our agenda is the Infrastructure Planning and Growth. All right, and A is a Consultant Selection Award for Douglas Road, Bittersweet Road, Roundabout, Intersection Improvement. That's number 2100024, Preliminary Engineering and Right-of-Way Services.
My apologies, you see a lot of me today. Sky Metters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th, 11th floor. What this item is, is back in March 15th, we received six letters of interest to perform the preliminary engineering and right-of-way services for the Douglas Road and Bittersweet Road Roundabout. My office took those proposals, and we reviewed, evaluated, and scored those per the NDOT procedures. And upon the review of those submittals, we recommend that the board consider the proposal from the Lockmueller Group, the most responsive and qualified firm to provide these services. And we request the board's authorization to begin negotiations with them to do this project.
Yeah, just briefly, Sky, explain how the negotiations go.
Now, what hap- well, the negotiations, the actual proposal review process was qualification-based, so that was a- there's a scoring matrix that's given by NDOT. There were four people from our office that did the scoring individually. And then we came up with those scores. The way the negotiations will work is that Lockmueller will prepare the proposal, their proposal with fee for different task items necessary to perform the project. And then we will review that to make sure it is fitting, given the scope of work. And then, once that's approved, we will bring that contract forward to the board for approval of the contract. And then it will go to NDOT to get things squared away.
Yeah, I just want the public to know that there's just not a, here's what it's going to cost, there's a lot of work, and-
Yes.
As you said, negotiations and stuff, because this is going to be a very large project, and it's probably going to cost a lot of money. So, we're just making sure that everything's going to be done correctly.
Yes, yes, and we, there are, there's a lot that goes in. There's a few rounds that go in with us from the initial agreement that we received to what we actually end up presenting to the board.
Okay. And when would you expect this to start?
This project is, the engineering for this will start, it's funded currently. It will be funded for this year, and it will start, most likely, in June or July of this year, the engineering. The actual project itself is slated, if I recall, for fiscal year 2027.
So, I won't be here. No further questions at this time.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion approved.
And it goes to the Lockmueller Group, correct? Yes?
Pardon me?
It goes to the Lockmueller Group, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what I thought, yeah. That's what we're saying, yes. That's what you wanted. Good. Okay, moving on now to B for you. It's quote rejection, Portage Manor garage demolition, or garage, I'm sorry, garage demolition.
Yes, back in March 8th of this year, the board took quotes for demolition of a garage out at Portage Manor where there's already been some brick wall falling in and so forth. There were some other items within that scope of work too, some removal of some tanks, some strapping to stabilize, better stabilize a stack that they have out there. And the bids came in extremely high and mainly due to the, just the bidding climate right now. There's a lot of work out there and a lot of bids are coming in high. And so, what, after reviewing those and talking with the engineer, we are requesting that the board reject those bids from the two contracts, those quotes that we received from the two contractors. And we plan to resubmit another RFQ with a very reduced scope, more or less just dealing with that actual garage area itself to try and get that issue out of the way. So, I request that we, that the board reject the submitted bids that were received on March 8th.
Yeah, I believe, because I questioned, I think that was in like 360,000 area-
Yes.
-which was crazy money.
Yes.
So, hopefully, the scope can be reduced where it makes sense, because that price was insane.
Yeah, we've looked at the scope with the engineer and we've been able to take it down quite a bit to hopefully get it within where our budgets are at and where we think it should be.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't want to table that, we just want to-
No, move for approval-
Okay.
-to reject that ridiculous bid.
Right, and I'll second that, to reject it.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, good. Then we have the C is Approval of Supplemental Agreement Number One from DLZ Indiana LLC for DAS number 1400296 Phase One and 0902286 Phase Two, McKinley Highway Added Travel Lanes.
Yeah, this is a project that is currently set to be led in August of this year. It's been ongoing for quite some time. And what ended up happening was breaking it up into two different phases and working on those two phases separately. What that ended up doing was, it ended up having some tasks in the contract removed, some tasks added, some tasks may not have been taking the fee that was allotted towards it and so forth. So, what this supplemental does is it cleans all that up for a net zero claim towards the project. So, this supplemental just cleans things up. It does not add any cost whatsoever to the project itself. We've reviewed this agreement, find it reasonable, and request that the revised scope of services in this supplemental be approved.
I have no questions, I move for approval.
And I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good. Okay, and then, the last one is number D, or letter D. Approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners and the City of South Bend, Indiana Board of Public Works for the Contractor Paving Round Three Project.
What this item is, is something we get to do occasionally with the City of South Bend. And it's in an area where they, with their paving program, they are paving some roads that either are adjacent to some county roads, or there's some times where the county may own half the road, the city may own the other half. And just for some cost savings, they'll pave the whole road and we will reimburse them. More or less, this is one of those items where we agree to pay them up to $68,786.48 for them to pave the county portions of Fellow Street and Rose Street in their paving project. So, they're handling all the administrative and those types of things. And it's a real good way that we can work with the city and we try to reciprocate whenever we can when we're paving roads near where they're at. And we appreciate that they came forward with this and allowed us the opportunity to do this. We've reviewed this MOU and we find that it's good and recommend your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Well, I'll ask a question first. Is there specific areas where that would apply to?
In this, for this particular agreement, it's on Fellow Street and Rose Street. It's been a while since I looked at this, so I can't remember the limits off the top of my head. But there's other areas, like a couple of years ago, we paved ironwood over near the bypass just south of Ireland. And there's areas there where half of it's the city's, half of it's ours, and we did an agreement with them too. So, I don't, does that answer your question, or?
Kinda, that's good.
Kinda, yeah.
Y'all use the same thickness of whatever you're going to ply?
I looked at what they planned to do and it's similar to what we would have done in that instance, yes.
Like similar, less or more?
It's pretty much about the same, the material might be a little bit different, but-
Okay, good answer.
Yeah.
And then, we're just supplement South Bend for moving forward with that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our move for approval?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, I think we're still writing numbers down, or we have the numbers, would you rather us wait till after the next item?
That'd be, yeah.
Okay, we'll wait till after the next item to read those numbers. Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, next thing is the County Police. And it says, A is Approval of Interlocal Agreement Concerning Annual Brine Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. Any comments or questions from anyone from the County Police?
Steve Newton, Executive Officer for the County Police Department, Office 401 West Sample Street. This is an annual agreement or interlocal agreement between South Bend Police Department, St. Joseph County Police Department, and the Michoacan Police Department on the dispersment of the award of the annual justice assistance grant award. This year, it's been slated for Officer Safety and Technology Program. More than likely, what we're going to look at doing with our share is to upgrade the recording cameras in our interview rooms, both out at the post and here at the jail.
Steve, how is that money split between the three entities?
The lion's share goes to South Bend, then Michoacan gets a less, and then we get the least at $7,341 out of a total of $97,921.
Okay, why is it dispersed that way? Is it based on number of officers, calls, population?
I believe it's based on the crime statistics, but I can definitely find out for sure-
Alright.
-what formula that they're-
Alright, thanks. I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, I was just going to say, are you ready to come up with the bid now, Sky?
Commissioners, my name is, my name is Mike Meeks, I'm the highway engineer for IPG here in the county. We have six different bids, some items are, some of these bids are a couple hundred items, longs, as to say, there's about 100, and some of them, there's 100 prices. So, I'm going to hit the highlights and then I will stay here and I'll spread them out on the table here. And if anybody or the commissioners have questions about the price of grease or those kind of details, I'll be glad to field those after the fact, if that's acceptable to commissioners.
Is that okay then?
Yeah, so you're not asking for any action today, are you?
We're asking the county commissioners to send this to the county engineer for review and then we'll come back with our analysis and approval, yes.
Okay, so, okay, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
For Mr. Fleming?
Aye.
Motion to send these bids back to the county engineer for review and reporting has been approved.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay. We have no old businesses, so we're moving back along now to any public comments? Please just make sure you say your name and your address and you get three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I was a mailman for 32 years. I serviced the same area in Michoacan called Hooligan Heights for 23 of those years. Got to know my customers and their families by name. I see them today and they still recognize me. I have to say, I want to not take this time to publicly apologize if I ever, over those 23 years, discussed something about my health or my well-being that they felt I was being offensive. I just want to apologize for that. And if I had, I would have heard about it from my supervisor at the end of the day. They would have informed somebody that, hey, Dan's talking crazy stuff, you need to talk to him and stop him. That being said, Commissioner Fleming, I am so sorry. This is wrong. To come forward now and bring out these allegations, which if they didn't like what you were saying at the time, grow something and grow up and tell me you don't like what I'm saying to you. Or complain to somebody at the time. But to come forward with this nonsense now and to find out the way it was by real news Michiana through a foyer that was filled within a week, and we still have the South Bend Tribune, I'm sure they're envious of that, still have them trying to get their foias from four months ago that aren't being filled. It sure seems a little suspicious that this is being sped up and the timing of it after they get the redistricting maps passed. But now that that's done, it appears, Commissioner Fleming, your usefulness to them is done and let's go ahead and replace her. And they're going to hold a caucus, because we're past running a special election and all those Republican voters in District Three just know that you don't get to vote for who's going to represent you for the next two years. Thank you.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Speak up just a little louder, Debra.
Right. Okay, can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay. Deborah Durell, 21677, Otten Road, South Bend. As many of you know, I often speak on shared environmental health and equity issues. And I took off work again for valuable time on the St. Mary's College Sustainable Farm again today to help connect the dots on politics driving muddy solutions and dumbing down the public. I find it hard to believe that this group of bright and nimble minds in our county government could not come up with a more timely and appropriate way to handle this quote sexual harassment issue. This reflects some lack of judgment all around and that this collateral damage is fine if it serves the political agenda. There is more to the timing and use of a highly charged political term used when it serves the political agenda, while the term climate change cannot be used in reflecting citizens' concern in the comprehensive plan process. I posit that both sexual harassment and climate change are real and we need to be able to use those terms when they are appropriate. The consultants are doing a good job with the comprehensive plan and they're very professional. And yet, politics is still affecting the basic process. These bright and caring minds are taking a look at how to discuss and deal with complex and hot topics outside of being influenced by party and political agenda. We need to be able to assess and create a system that makes good sense on more levels than politics. And we need more of the public at the table to understand and establish a path forward. I don't think it's too much to say that at this point in time, the degree of political manipulation that is interfering with good common sense process is killing us. Please move these meetings to the evening so many more members of the citizenry can attend these meetings. You need us and we need each other, including students and working academic professionals to tweak this governing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Cynthia Heckman-Davis at 125 Gemini Lane, Waukerton, Indiana. I would like to speak regarding the birth equity proposal from the Department of Health. I'm a physician for the past 38 years in this county and I have seen infants die, women die, for reasons that related mostly to economics. Our Indiana General Assembly did pass this year an extension of Medicaid for women who have given birth from six weeks is now extended to 12 months, so that should help. Changing even the lead levels to a more strict standard should help with the general health in our county and our state. Indiana has more women and infants dying than most states. Depending on which rank you look at, Indiana is either 47th or 48th out of 50 in terms of maternal and infant health. I would also like to say that there is going to be a birth equity conference next week at Century Center on April 14th. This is designed to help start educating our providers, anybody who provides for pregnant women, young children, because there's a lot of education that's going to be needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Sure, I'm going to talk. Thank you for your comments regarding my fellow commissioner. We're at the point now in St. Joe County that we're turning into a national level when it comes to political divisiveness. And I think statements have been made and the way people have been treated, especially by people who know and been involved in this stuff, is just despicable. It's unethical. Again, when you get in this arena of politics, it's become very cutthroat. It's become a reason that people do not want to be involved in this business because of all the stuff that goes on. So, when people are attempting to do their jobs, do the best for what they were elected to do for a community, and then you get all this backstabbing, ridiculous things thrown at people, the way that people are being manipulated, talked about, and used is deplorable. And it's real embarrassing for St. Joe County, y'all have seen it through, I hate to go back to the maps, but that was kind of the genesis of this. And now, we've got to a point where all hands on deck. People can say what they want, they can do what they want, they can attempt to twist things that aren't even remotely true. And again, it's very bad for St. Joe County. We are not, Washington DC, we are not on a national level of the stuff that goes on in politics, but we are seeping into that. And it's revolting, I think it's horrible to treat any person in that light. If you have an issue with them, go talk to them, go try to work with them, do something. But to use a party's own political gain- but to use a party's own political gain for supposedly the good of a party, we should be working for the good of St. Joe County, not for either party. And again, the way that people are being treated is absolutely revolting, and I will probably have more to later date, but that's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? No one? Okay, having none, is there a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye, Mr. Agostino.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
The meeting is recessed.
And then for the media, can you stick around? We're going to talk about our sirens with Kaylee.
Recording stopped.